Good afternoon and welcome to the State Energy Planning Board meeting. I'm Doreen Harris, President and CEO of NYSERDA and the Chair of the State Energy Planning Board. As a reminder, today's meeting is open to the public to observe both here in Albany and on our live stream. Thank you to everyone who is here with us today and to those tuned in online. Before turning to our agenda, I'd like to welcome the members of the State Energy Planning Board and their designees. I ask that each board member or delegate introduce themselves. Going around the table, please share your name, title, and agency.
Good afternoon. Richard Ball, Commissioner of New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets.
Good afternoon. Rich Dewey, President and CEO of the New York Independent System Operator.
Hello. Laura McLean, a Director at New York State Department of State on behalf of Secretary of State Walter Moseley.
Rory Christian, Chair of Public Service Commission, CEO of the Department of Public Service.
Good afternoon. I'm Yvonne Martinez, Deputy Commissioner from the Department of Labor, representing Commissioner Roberta Reardon.
Hi, folks. Sanjay Seth, Deputy Commissioner for Climate, Air, and Energy at DEC, Designee for Com- Amanda Lepton.
Good afternoon. Kevin Malone, New York State Department of Health Center for Environmental Health on behalf of Health Commissioner Jim McDonald.
Good afternoon. Michelle Clark, Vice President and Director of Workforce and Empire State Development, Designee for Commissioner Hope Knight, President and CEO of Empire State Development.
Good afternoon. Terry O'Leary, Executive Deputy Commissioner for New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services here on behalf of Commissioner Bray.
Carter Strickland, Chief Sustainability Officer for SUNY here on behalf of Chancellor John Baigame Jr.
Assemblymember DeeDee Barrett, representing Speaker Carl Hasty.
Thanks, Rory.
Marie Teres Dominguez, Commissioner of New York State Department of Transportation.
Thank you all. For the record, I note we have a quorum for today's meeting. I'll now turn to today's business. Please note for the record that an agenda was shared with board members and posted on the Energy Plan website for the public to review on Friday, November 21st. Our agenda for today will include reviewing and approving the minutes of the November 13th, 2025 Board Meeting, discussing analysis conducted for the State Energy Plan, and any other business followed by next steps. We can move to the first item on the agenda today to accept the meeting minutes of the State Energy Planning Board held on November 13th, 2025. Are there any comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes into the record and will post them on the website. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes are accepted into the record. Last month, we heard presentations on proposed changes to the draft plan. Today, we will hear updates on the four core analyses developed in support of the State Energy Plan, beginning with our updated pathways analysis. In the time since we ran the pathways analysis for the draft energy plan, we have learned more specifics of several market and federal policy changes that were estimated in assumptions and included in the draft plan's analysis. The updated analysis we'll be discussing today includes more specific information on impacts as we know them, including impacts from federal policy and program changes on the outlook for deployment of several energy technologies such as renewable generation systems, electric vehicles, and heat pumps. It also includes price impacts on all technologies due to tariffs and ongoing supply chain challenges, and it reflects delayed deployment timelines due to general market uncertainty. Our updated analysis incorporates all of these developments, but it does continue to support the five overall goals of the plan: abundance and diversity, affordability, economic growth, innovation, and progress on decarbonization. The analysis provides insights for what will be necessary to provide reliable and affordable energy for New Yorkers, which requires a diverse mix of energy resources and supply infrastructure while also promoting energy efficiency and flexible demand. This is the case even as we see new clean resources come online. To speak to these trends and to moderate today's analytical presentations, I will now introduce Carl Moss, NYSERDA's Senior Vice President for Policy Analysis and Research. Carl.
Great. Thank you, Chair Harris. During the Board's June 25th meeting, you all heard how the pathways analysis is designed to account for current policies, technology availability, consumer uptick, and the energy planning law requirements to consider energy affordability, reliability, economic development, equity, and environmental needs. I'd like to reiterate that conducting such an analysis during a time of uncertainty is challenging. As Chair Harris noted, our modeling efforts have needed to react to an economic and policy context that is shifting in real time. Looking out over 15 years requires assumptions regarding technological progress and policy advancement. To address uncertainties in both these areas, this analysis explores several potential scenarios to better understand the spectrum of possible outcomes. Using a scenario-based approach allows us to maintain optionality and flexibility. Just as this exercise evolved between the draft and final plan, we expect the market and policy landscape will continue to evolve after we issue this plan. Consequently, we'll need to remain flexible as we move forward and ensure that the state's investments support multiple possible energy futures. The common thread that runs through all of these scenarios is the reinforcement of the five energy plan goals which Chair Harris just spoke to: abundance, diversity, affordability, the need to support economic growth, the need for innovation, and continued progress on decarbonization. The intent of this analysis is to help direct our investments in a way that supports our energy planning goals. However, it is becoming ever more apparent that continued attention to analysis will be necessary to ensure the actions and recommendations in this energy plan remain fully informed. So with that opening, it's my pleasure, and I'll hand over the mic to Nick Patinay, who's our Assistant Director of NYSERDA's Policy Analysis Team to present on the pathways analysis. Nick.
All right. Thank you, Carl. Next slide, please, and one more. All right. Thanks, everyone. I'm Nick Patinay, Assistant Director for Policy Analysis at NYSERDA. Over the last four or five months, we've been rerunning our pathways analysis. In this latest modeling, we continue to use the same toolkit that we used in the draft. There's two main modules that we include. The first is an economy-wide model, which we use to estimate stocks and sales of key energy equipment and forecast energy demand over time. And the second is our electric sector model, which we use to build out an electric system that meets scenario-specific loads, maintains reliability, and achieves scenario-specific policy targets. We've made a number of updates between the draft and the final, and many of these were informed by feedback that we heard during the public stakeholder process, and those are highlighted in green on this slide. The updates that we made generally fall into three buckets. The first is related to updating input data. I'll note that we didn't have input, new input data available across the board, but we did make targeted updates where that information was available. This includes, for example, incorporating the latest filings on state and utility programs, as well as incorporating the latest NYSERDA renewable supply curve that reflects some of market pressures seen in some of our more recent bid data. The second bucket of updates is related to updates to the current policy landscape. This includes, for example, perhaps the most significant change between draft and final, as Doreen noted, which is the federal policy change especially related to HR1, which repealed a lot of the IRA incentives that were previously available for clean energy technologies across the economy. We've also made updates for our state policy context, for example, including the 1 gigawatt night but nuclear project that was announced at around the time of the draft. The third bucket of updates is new sensitivity work. This is where we explore key policy questions through dedicated model runs. We have new sensitivities in the latest modeling that explore, for example, the impacts of federal policy change on our key energy metrics, as well as new sensitivities exploring dispatchable emission-free resource optionality. I'll note that the macro trends in energy use are consistent with what we saw in the draft. However, we do see in the latest modeling some delayed progress and cost increase compared to the draft modeling, largely related to federal impacts of policy change, as well as a greater opportunity for nuclear as a solution set. All right. Next slide, please. Okay, so in the latest modeling, we use the same scenario framework that we used in the draft, and we model five different scenarios. The first is our no-action case. This includes federal policies updated as of around October 2025 when modeling was conducted, but excludes most of our New York state and local clean energy policies. And this case acts as a point of reference against which we can compare the other cases to understand the impacts of our clean energy policies. Next is our current policies case. This layers on top of no action our current progress toward achievement of our state and local clean energy policies as of around October 2025. Next is our additional action case, where we model ongoing acceleration of adoption of clean energy technologies from some mix of future policies. The current policies and additional action represent bottom-up estimations of the energy future, and these act as our core planning case for the State Energy Plan. Lastly, we have two net-zero cases. These cases are goal-seeking to the 2050 economy-wide emission limits, showing what would be needed to be able to hit those long-term targets. We model two different flavors of the net-zero case with the primary difference being on electric, building electrification. Scenario A has more all-electric buildings, and Scenario B has more customers adopting hybrid heat pumps, where they maintain a backup gas connection for use on the coldest days, helping to mitigate some of the impacts of building electrification on the electric system. Okay, next slide, please. So in addition to those five cases, we also have two sensitivities dedicated to exploring the impacts of federal policy change. The first is what we call the pre-rollback case. This is where we explore the impacts of federal policy changes to date. This includes federal policies as of around the start of the year, including, for example, programs like the ITC and PTC for renewables and support for EVs, heat pumps, and efficiencies that have since been rolled back. By comparing this pre-rollback case to the current policies case, we can understand the impacts of federal policy changes to date on our key energy metrics. Importantly, our current policies case still contains state and local policies as of around October 25. This includes, for example, our current progress towards CES and Zero by Forty, Advanced Clean Cars and Advanced Clean Truck programs, building regulations, and state programs for EVs, heat pumps, and efficiency. These are essential for ensuring continued progress and preventing worse outcomes from the federal policy rollbacks. A second bookend explores the potential for further federal action that could impact our energy future. In this case, we model, for example, what could happen if the ACC and ACT waivers are repealed, or, for example, if DOE appliance standards are rolled back. By comparing this further rollback case to the current policy case, we can understand the impacts of potential additional federal impacts to our energy future. Next slide. And one more. So now we'll look at some of our key energy use sectors, and we'll start with the building sector, which accounts for about 50% of our current energy use. Here we have a slide that unpacks the trends related to the residential sector, but I'll note that we see similar trends in the commercial sector as well. On the left, we have the trajectory for heat pump sales shares over the modeling period. It's a way of understanding some of the magnitude of change across the different scenarios. What we see is that, in all cases, new construction, investments in efficiency, and HVAC turnover with increasing deployments of heat pumps are driving energy system change in the building sector. The no-action case, which has been updated for the repeal of federal IRA incentives, sees only moderate adoption of heat pump and shells. This has accelerated further in our additional action and current policies core planning case, achieving about two to three times the levels of deployment seen in the no-action case. This increased deployment is related to, for example, our state and utility heat pump and efficiency programs, as well as our advanced building codes. In these core planning cases, efficiency is a bedrock strategy, and we see that stockwide adoption of energy efficiency outpaces customers adopting heat pumps, helping to mitigate the impact of building electrification on load growth. Lastly, as we look at the net-zero cases, which are goal-seeking to the 2050 economy-wide emission limit, we see that by 2035, nearly all sales of HVAC equipment would need to be heat pumps. This represents a significant gap in these net-zero cases compared to what's seen in the current policy and additional action cases. Next slide. All right, so this slide will unpack the impacts of federal policy changes on the building sector. The pre-rollback case explores the energy future if, for example, we had retained the $2,000 per residential heat pump incentive previously available under the IRA, as well as efficiency incentives that were previously available. In this case, we estimate that there would be about 200,000 more residential heat pumps in the stock in 2040. We estimate that building energy use would be about 2% lower as a result of increased efficiency adoption. Emissions would be about 2 million metric tons lower in 2040. And importantly, we see that in aggregate, there's about $1.5 billion in lost incentives that represents a cost shift onto New Yorkers who are needing to purchase equipment. Importantly, as we look at the current policy case, we do see continued progress largely tied to, for example, our state and local programs and policies. In this case, we get to about 1.4 million residential heat pumps in the stock in 2040. In the further rollback case, we explore, for example, what could happen if the federal DOE appliance standards were further rolled back. In this case, we estimate that there would be an increased adoption of less efficient equipment in the building stock. This would increase building energy use around 2%, push up emissions about 4 million metric tons, and lead to a cost increase of about $85 to $310 million per year in fuel expenditures. All right. Next slide, please. Okay, so our next sector is the transportation sector, which accounts for about 40% of current energy use. And on the left, we have two figures looking at the sales shares for zero-emission vehicles over the modeling period, with light-duty vehicles on top and medium- and heavy-duty vehicles on the bottom. We see that across all cases, the transportation sector is expected to undergo meaningful shifts to vehicle electrification, and we see that this transition is largely already underway. Even in the no-action case, which has been updated for the repeal of IRA incentives, we estimate about 2.4 million light-duty zero-emission vehicles by 2040. As we look at the blue and green lines, our current policy and additional action case see accelerated adoption largely tied to, for example, our Advanced Clean Cars and Advanced Clean Truck programs. In these cases, we estimate about 3.7 to 5.2 million light-duty vehicles in the stock by 2040. As you look at the net-zero case, we see opportunity for further acceleration. However, I will note here that we see a comparatively narrow gap between the net-zero case and our core planning cases compared to what we saw in the prior building slide, which reflects the value of those state and local programs driving progress. Next slide. And now we'll look at the impacts of federal policy changes on the transportation sector, looking at the pre-rollback case, which explores what adoption could have looked like, for example, had we retained the $7,500 per light-duty vehicle IRA incentive, up to $40,000 for medium- and heavy-duty vehicles. In this sensitivity, we estimate there'd be about 1.2 more light-duty zero-emission vehicles by 2040, reducing emissions by about 5 million metric tons. Importantly, we see that in aggregate, the lost incentives as a result of IRA rollbacks lead to about $4.5 billion in cost shift toward New Yorkers who are needing to purchase vehicles. As we look at the current policy case, we do see the value in our state programs, for example, Advanced Clean Cars and Advanced Clean Trucks, as well as our state incentives helping to drive continued progress on the order of 3.7 million light-duty zero-emission vehicles in 2040. However, I will note that in our modeling, we're seeing about a five-to-eight-year delay in achievement of the targets for ACC and ACT, reflecting our current trends, as well as the impact of federal policy changes. And then finally, in our further rollback case, we acknowledge that the future of the ACC and ACT programs have been targeted by federal actions to date, so we explore the potential impact if those programs were not available. In this sensitivity, we estimate that there would be about 430,000 fewer light-duty ZEVs on the road in 2040, increasing emissions by about 5 million metric tons, and increasing fuel expenditures for New Yorkers on the order of $900 million to $1.6 billion per year. All right. Now we'll look at some of our economy-wide results, and we'll start with the gas system infrastructure story. On the left, we have a graphic that's showing the trajectory for residential customers over the modeling period across the different scenarios. We look at residential customers as they typically have firm service, which is an important metric for gas infrastructure planners. We see across all cases, the gas system remains a significant energy delivery resource over the study period and will require continued investment for safe and reliable provision of service. In the no-action case, which is the solid black line on top, we see that absent state and local policies, there could be ongoing growth in residential gas customers tied to new construction, as well as fuel switching from oil and electric resistance to natural gas. As we look in the blue and green lines, current policies and additional action core planning cases, we see the value in our state and local policies helping to stem near-term growth and lead to long-term declines in gas infrastructure. This results from, for example, our state and utility programs that help to incentivize efficiency in electrification, as well as our advanced building regulations. However, I will note here that we see some uncertainty, which is reflected in the shaded blue area. This reflects the range of filings from the utility long-term plan filings, with some utilities projecting growth and others projecting declines. Finally, as we look at the net-zero cases, this is where we see the most significant declines in the gas system size over time, and I'll note that we see in the net-zero B case the opportunity for a somewhat larger residual gas network, and that's tied to the assumption set, in this case with a greater reliance on hybrid heat pumps, where customers retain a gas connection for use on the coldest days. However, I'll note that maintaining this larger gas network over time and staying within the 2050 economy-wide emission limit would require careful coordination to ensure that customers are reserving their gas use for the coldest days. Next slide. Now we'll look at the electric system, starting with annual loads on the demand side. What we see is that across all cases, loads are expected to grow over the modeling period, and much of this load growth is tied to new large loads interconnecting to the system at about 16 terawatt hours. These represent important economic development opportunities for the state and require infrastructure investments to be able to take advantage of them. To various extent, loads are also driven higher by increased vehicle electrification across the different scenarios. As we look at our current policies and additional action case, we see that vehicle electrification drives an incremental about 8 to 14 terawatt hours of load growth. In those core planning cases, stockwide building efficiency plays an important role in offsetting building electrification load growth, underscoring the importance of these efficiency investments. And then finally, as we look at the net-zero cases, this is where we see the most transformational load growth over the modeling period, and this is associated with a significantly increased electrification across the economy, but especially related to heat pump adoption and industrial electrification. Next slide. All right, so between our draft and final modeling, some of the most significant changes in the modeling were in the electric supply model, and I've highlighted here three buckets of updates that we've made between the draft and the final. The first is relating to reflecting the latest cost pressures in the modeling. This includes the accelerated rollback of the investment tax credits and production tax credits for renewables, as well as reflecting the tariff impacts that are disrupting supply chains and increasing component costs. Lastly, we've incorporated the latest NYSERDA renewable supply curve that reflects the latest market dynamics seen in some of our more recent bid data. Additionally, we've updated the modeling to reflect deployment headwinds. Here, for example, due to federal permitting obstruction, we're seeing a delay in the deployment of offshore wind, and the near-term headwinds are delaying achievement of the 70% renewable target. And then finally, related to nuclear, we've added the 1 gigawatt night but nuclear project that was announced around the time of the publication of the draft. We've also allowed new nuclear as a candidate resource to be selected in the modeling by 2040 in Zones A through F. We'll unpack these dynamics in greater detail in some of the coming slides, but we do see that compared to the draft, final modeling sees higher costs, delayed renewable additions, and a more diverse resource mix. Next slide. All right. So this slide looks at the capacity mix change over the modeling period in the additional action case. What we see here is that meeting growing loads and achieving Zero by Forty is going to require a significant build-out of a mix of resources. This includes upwards of 30 gigs of both distributed and utility solar, which we see in yellow, about nine gigawatts of distributed and utility storage, which we see in purple, as well as significant additions of both land-based and offshore wind, which we see in blue. We see that the pace of adoption is impacted by federal permitting challenges and deployment headwinds. The 2035 offshore wind deployment is below the nine-gigawatt target, and we see that the pace of addition leads to delayed achievement of the 70% renewable target to the 2036 to 2040 time horizon. We also see the value in preserving existing hydro and nuclear assets as these remain important contributors over the modeling period. We see the value in the availability of new nuclear, which helps to reduce the need for other renewables, and we'll unpack this dynamic more in a later slide. And lastly, we see that combustion units continue to be needed for system reliability and other dynamic, we'll unpack on a later slide. Next slide. Okay, so given uncertainty around the scale of nuclear that can be deployed by 2040, we modeled two different variants on the additional action case. One allows up to two gigawatts of nuclear to be selected in the model and has a higher cost of transmission, reflecting uncertainty on transmission builds over the modeling period. The second variant allows up to 3.3 gigawatts of new nuclear, a higher amount of nuclear available, and has lower cost transmission. What we see in the modeling is that in both variants, the model selects up to as much nuclear as is available to it, up to either 2.2 or 3.3, depending on the variant, underscoring the value of nuclear as a candidate resource. However, we also note some trade-offs between the two variants. The 2.2 gigawatt variant requires additional renewables, including about two gigawatts of additional offshore wind, which is challenged by the current federal permitting environment. The 3.3 gigawatt case would require further acceleration in the 2040 deployment of nuclear, as well as another 1 gigawatt of transmission between upstate and downstate, which is needed to get that power throughout the state where it's needed. I will note that even in the lower variant, we do expect additional upstate-downstate transmission to be needed in the post-2040 modeling horizon, underscoring the value of that investment. Both of these variants underscore the value of nuclear as a candidate resource, and in light of deployment uncertainty, planning should pursue a mix of resources and investments that can support multiple energy futures. Next slide. All right, so this slide will unpack the trajectory for the combustion fleet over the modeling period. On top, we have the aggregate combustion fleet; on the bottom, we have the aggregate retirements seen over the modeling period. What we see is that due to the advanced age of the existing fleet, about 13 gigawatts of aging combustion units are expected to retire over the modeling period, with most retirements occurring in the downstate zones. Of these, about 3.5 gigawatts are expected to need to be repowered, and the majority of these at around 3 gigawatts are in New York City. What we see in the blue bar is that all Zone J repowering is occurring by 2035, and this is largely related to the reduced availability of offshore wind in the latest modeling. The overall combustion fleet is about 10 gigawatts smaller than at the start of the modeling period. This is largely a result of the reliability contributions of other resources that we're adding over time, for example, nuclear, storage, chippy, and renewables. Finally, the remaining 15-gigawatt fleet continues to need to be available, as these are important contributors for firm, flexible generation. And in our modeling, to comply with Zero by Forty, we estimate that these units would need to convert to be able to run on a zero-emission fuel. In our core modeling, we include green hydrogen as our zero-emission fuel as a proxy D for dispatchable emission-free resource. However, I'll note, green hydrogen is a proxy D for, and the definitions related to Zero by Forty aren't continuing to play out in the Zero by Forty DPS proceeding. I will note that multiple stakeholders highlighted the challenges of relying on green hydrogen as a D for, and this was echoed in the NYSERDA Zero by Forty techno-economic assessment that was published in October, and so we'll explore some of the uncertainty around D for optionality in some of the next slides. Next slide. Okay, so in October, NYSERDA published a Zero by Forty techno-economic assessment that looked at various candidate dispatchable emission-free resources and the trade-offs of the different options. Here I've got some of the takeaways related to green hydrogen, which was used as the proxy D for in our core planning cases. That study found that hydrogen could theoretically provide flexible zero-emission power and can also take advantage of curtailed renewables, but it faces major hurdles, which I put into four buckets on the slide here. The first hurdle is related to transportation and storage infrastructure. Because green hydrogen is not a drop-in alternative replacement for natural gas, a significant amount of both transportation and storage infrastructure would be needed to ensure green hydrogen were available throughout the state when it's needed. This represents a particular deployment challenge for 2040. A second challenge is related to generator retrofits, because the existing fleet can operate on 100% hydrogen- operate on 100% hydrogen. Generators would need to undergo a retrofit, which would come at a cost and also present a logistical challenge, as those units would be temporarily unavailable during the retrofit process. The third bucket of challenges is related to production. To reduce green hydrogen would require a significant build-out of electrolyzers, which would increase load, and also require additional renewables, a time when renewables are needed across the rest of the economy as well. Finally, our challenge is related to cost. We estimate that green hydrogen is about 20 times more expensive than natural gas. This is one of the resources most impacted by federal policy changes, and there's significant upward cost uncertainty. In summary, the zero by 40 techno-economic assessment suggests that a mix of highly-responsive D for resources will be needed, but hydrogen hurdles make it an unlikely statewide solution by 2040. And we'll explore some of the value of optionality on the next slide. Next slide, please. All right. So we did run two sensitivities exploring the value of D for optionality. The first looks at using RNG as an alternative dispatchable emission-free fuel instead of green hydrogen. In this case, we estimate about $3 billion of NPV savings through 2040, with further savings in the period beyond. These savings are largely related to the fact that RNG is expected to be about two and a half times less expensive than green hydrogen, and also avoids the generator conversion costs. Because RNG is a drop-in replacement to natural gas, we observe that many of the technical challenges related to green hydrogen infrastructure build-out can be avoided. Importantly, RNG is still meaningfully more expensive than natural gas, and as a result, the modeling continues to use those units at very low-capacity factors. The model would rather add things like nuclear and renewables for the majority of our energy needs. As a result, the impact on emissions is fairly small at 1.6 million metric tons. This is small, especially in the context of the 2050 economy-wide emission limit, which is about 64 million metric tons, and especially when considering the amount of effort that the power sector does in helping to decarbonize the rest of the economy. A second bookend looks at a more restrictive option set for D for's and doesn't allow new nuclear. In this case, we estimate the cost would be about $28 billion higher than the core case. Increase in costs are driven by a mix of factors, including increased deployment of other renewables needed, which are under an accelerated phase-out of ITC and PTC. There's also a need for accelerated investment in those resources, given annual build limitations, and there's also greater reliance on very high-cost hydrogen for balancing. These two bookends really highlight the value of D for optionality in helping to avoid both technical challenges but also reduce system costs. Finally, we acknowledge that there is remaining uncertainty. Some of this is related to large load growth interconnecting to the system, as well as uncertainty around the pace of deployment for other resources, including nuclear, renewables, and other D for's. And should these uncertainties materialize, there could be some need for continued use of natural gas peaking capacity. Next slide. The last sensitivities that we ran in the power sector explore the impacts of federal policy changes. The electric sector was the sector most impacted by federal policy changes as a result of the accelerated phase-out of the ITC and PTC for renewables. Here, we estimate about $25 billion in lost federal support as a result of those policy changes. So there's just one component of the cost increase as a result of federal policy change. We also see impacts related to tariffs and long-term industry learning associated with industry uncertainty. Among the resources most impacted, we see utility and distributed solar, followed by land-based and offshore wind. This sensitivity underscores the value in the actions that New York is taking to help accelerate near-term procurements and get more projects eligible for credits before they phase out. In this case, we also see that, given long lead times, nuclear additions are still able to benefit from tax credit through the 2040 modeling period, and this helps increase the attractiveness of nuclear as a candidate resource. In addition to cost uncertainty, we also see uncertainty related to permitting affecting deployment pace and further future uncertainty related to additional regulations and the duration of these policy changes. Next slide. All right. So now we'll look at our economy-wide emission trajectory under Climate Act accounting. We see that, to date, emissions are about 14% below the start, the 1990 baseline for the latest DC GHG inventory. We see further reduction in emissions across all cases. Major drivers of reductions include transportation electrification and device efficiency improvements, as well as building shell improvements. As we look at our core planning cases, we see further reductions largely related to increased renewables deployment, more aggressive building and transportation electrification, as well as improved building codes. In our latest modeling, we also incorporate the latest upstream emission factor for natural gas from the latest DC GHG inventory, which was improved compared to what we used last time in the draft, and this helps to offset some of the lost progress from federal policy changes modeled between draft and final. As we saw in the draft, no case is achieving a 40% economy-wide emission reduction in 2030, and instead, our current policies and additional action case are achieving a 40% reduction in 2037 to 2038 time horizon. Lastly, we see the impacts of federal policy changes. The changes to date, we estimate, will increase emissions in 2040 by about 7 million metric tons, and further rollbacks that we explored, and the further rollback sensitivity could further increase emissions another 10 million metric tons. Next slide. Okay, so we also look at our emission trajectory under IPCC accounting. This is the accounting framework used by most other jurisdictions, and as in the DC GHG inventory, looking at progress under both allows us to compare ourselves to our neighbors and peers. We see that our IPCC net accounting is a magnified impact of both our progress to date, as well as our future progress. We see that on IPCC net accounting, our current emissions are about 24% lower than the 1990 baseline, and we estimate that additional action in our net zero cases are able to achieve a 40% reduction on a net IPCC basis by 2030, with current policies within about 2 million metric tons. Next slide. Now we'll look at the net benefits and net costs of the plan. On the left, we have a figure showing gross costs in the no-action case relative to the additional action case in 2030 and in 2040. What we see is that regardless of the pathway, continued investment is going to be needed to modernize existing infrastructure, replace aging equipment, and purchase fuels on the order of $150 billion a year, even in the no-action case. By 2030 and 2040, we see increased costs in the additional action case on the order of 3 and 13%, respectively. However, we note that the additional action case can meet about 85% of its investment needs through reallocation of spend from legacy fuel sources and legacy equipment. See the impact of federal policy changes, which are increasing cost to New Yorkers at about $31 billion over the modeling period. In addition to net costs, we also see net benefits on the additional action case and the policies embedded within it. We estimate significant benefits, both related to carbon reductions, as well as health, which my colleague Rachel will unpack later in a later presentation. We estimate that those benefits would exceed costs, leading to about $18 billion of net benefits in 2040, and through 2040, we estimate about $19 billion in aggregate NPV benefits. Next slide. All right, so now we'll just close with a few of our takeaways from the modeling exercise, starting with the near-term infrastructure story in 2030. We see that in the near term, the energy system is evolving in meaningful ways. New loads are causing system growth, replacement of aging stock is leading to improved efficiency, and we're seeing some organic adoption of technologies already underway. State actions are helping to accelerate this evolution across the economy. We also see that federal policy changes are expected to delay progress in many sectors and shift energy costs onto New Yorkers. Next slide. As we look out in the longer time horizon through 2040, we see that the impacts of state policies are felt more fully with time. By 2040, in our core planning cases, we estimate about 19% to 26% of the residential heating stock is heat pumps, and about 38% to 54% of the light-duty vehicle stock is zero-emission vehicles. We also see a transformation of the energy system with reduced economy-wide energy demand on the order of 16% to 20% as a result of efficiency investments. We see increasing electric loads and decline in gas consumption over the modeling period. We also see that to achieve zero by 40 will require a significant scale-up of a mix of resources, which is threatened by economic and federal policy change. And lastly, we see that costs in the additional action case rise on the order of 13% in 2040 relative to the no-action case. However, we estimate that about 85% of the investment needs in that case can come from reallocating spend from other fuel sources and legacy equipment. We estimate that net benefits exceed net costs on the order of $18 billion in 2040. Next slide. Regarding emissions, we see that existing New York state policies are laying substantial groundwork for economy-wide emission reductions, with the most significant reductions happening in the power generation, transportation, and building sector. However, the state is currently not on track for a 40% reduction in 2030. Instead, our current policies and additional action cases are hitting a 40% reduction in the 2037 to 2038 time horizon. Lastly, as we look at the long-term net zero achievement and the findings from our net zero cases, we see that achievement of the net zero economy-wide emission goal requires significant incremental action beyond what is currently contemplated in existing policies. All right, well, thank you all for the time, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, great, thank you, Nick. So this is a data-rich afternoon, so thank you all for joining us for this deep dive. So with that, I'd love to turn it over to the board to ask any questions, and Chair Harris, perhaps you want to open it up?
Certainly, Nick, get a drink of water there. Thank you for that. That was a fantastic presentation, and I think, as we had discussed earlier, we needed a bit of time to reflect these federal realities, and I appreciate the team's diligence to deliver that in time for our final plan, so thank you to you and the entire team. A couple observations from me and a question or two. First, an observation really has to do with the ways in which we now see those real benefits of diversity coming forward. What we see in this stack-up of resources includes, of course, a strong reliance on renewables and clean energy, but I'd say a recognition of the value of the combustion units, as well as the repowering of some units as part of that diverse energy mix. And I think this is important in a few ways first, and I'm sure that Rich Dewey will want to weigh in on this, but there's good alignment between this analysis and that of which we've seen from the New York ISO, both in the short and longer term, and I think that's an important area to be reflecting on. But also, I'd say it's not just from a reliability perspective, of course, that the NYSERDA would be focusing on, but also just the realities of the market conditions that we see and the changing context that has occurred even in the number of months since you've produced a draft energy plan and pathways analysis. So the reality is diversity is valuable for a variety of reasons, among them, the uncertainty that we're living within. I think the other aspect of this for me in preparing for today's presentation was really seeing the ways in which we still believe and see meaningful progress in the world of clean energy deployment. And I think that's very important. We need to look at the top-line numbers, but also the fact that we are actually, I had wrote this down, under additional action, we have 12.25 gigawatts of new renewable capacity being added to our state, and on top of that, the advanced nuclear capacity as well. So we are still talking about a dramatic transformation from a renewable build-out perspective and one that we, as a state, are really setting forth the ability to achieve. So those are my observations, but a couple of questions just to tee things off. First, Nick, maybe you can speak to the ways in which these large loads were modeled? We hear a lot about AI data centers, and I noted the assumption with respect to load growth coming from those large loads. So can you speak just in a little bit more detail as to how you took into account those load additions? And then also, I think it's important to zoom out a bit. We are part of a regional market. We import and export to our neighbors all of the time, and I was interested to know how we think about our state's plan in the context of the regional realities and/or constraints that are being seen from, again, the northeastern regions to our north as well. So AI and regional, any answers to those?
Sure, and thank you for those observations as well, Doreen. So I would say on large loads, the way that we've approached the modeling, we have basically two different ways that we reflect additional load growth. One, we have some forecasts in sectoral demand for the industrial sector, for example, that we source from AEO, and we expect some load growth is embedded within those forecasts. And then secondly, and the majority of where we get our information from related to large loads comes from the NYSERDA goldbook. I'll say that we've observed sort of a growing band in large loads from the goldbook in the last few years, and this reflects, I think, some uncertainty around these projects, how many will materialize, the ones that aren't in the interconnection queue just yet. And so I think this is an area for sort of ongoing research that we should continue to explore, both the magnitude of these additions, where they might be cited, and also their load profiles, all of which will impact the generation mix. In terms of our relation with our neighbors, I will certainly observe that our neighbors are facing the same challenges that New York is facing, and so we can't just assume that solar not available in New York is going to come from all of our neighboring territories. And so we do try to reflect some of those headwinds and make sure that we're being as conservative or as ambitious with some of our peers as we are in New York itself.
Please, if the other members have questions, please do jump in.
Doreen, thanks, thanks, Nick, for that presentation. It was fantastic. Couple of things, just to echo what you had said, Doreen, when you think about diversity and the value of diversity, for decades, New York has enjoyed a very diverse mix of generation, whether it's hydro, nuclear, gas, renewables on a growing scale, and that has allowed us to sustain reliable operations through shortages of natural gas. It has allowed us to maintain reliable operations through drought that impact the hydro. So the way that you've modeled and looked at the going-forward approach, I think, is really valuable. A good, strong planning effort always looks at multi-scenario futures and what the different options are, and so for that, I commend you. I think this is a pretty good, excellent body of work, quite honestly, and very consistent with a lot of the studies that we've done at the New York ISO, using independent models, and we keep coming up with a lot of the same information. I also commend you for the incorporation of the public feedback, which I think was really good. There was a lot of sessions where a lot of folks from the public offered really good, insightful information and comments, and we learned from that and the way that you incorporated that into this plan, I think, is also really good. One of the things I think I would encourage us to kind of keep our eyes on is with respect to these large loads, and we're always trying to refine the way in which we identify the pace with which they're going to come in, but also the volume. And the pace is kind of what scares us a little bit, because the development timelines for some of these large loads is a lot shorter than the development timelines for a lot of these generation resources, especially the ones that have some technological hurdles that we still need to overcome. So I'd encourage us to keep our eyes on that as we model the timelines. Question I have is, you looked at a lot of the hurdles, both from a cost and a logistics standpoint, of hydrogen. Does renewable natural gas have similar hurdles? Have we looked at what the barriers are? I agree totally with your relative costs, but just thinking about some of the other hurdles, how do you think about that?
Yeah, thanks for the feedback and the question. So the zero by 40 techno-economic assessment did look at RNG and renewable diesel, similar to the way that we unpacked some of the green hydrogen dynamics. I'll say there are certain benefits, because RNG is a drop-in alternative to natural gas in that we can sort of leverage the existing infrastructure, and so some of those hurdles related to generator retrofit costs, the need for underground and onsite storage, the need for, you know, new pipelines can be sort of mitigated with the RNG case. I'll also note that there's not the same impact in terms of electrolyzer build-out, increasing load, increasing renewables. So there's some of the benefits of RNG as a sort of drop-in alternative, but there is going to be challenges associated with scaling up that industry as well. In our techno-economic assessment, we cited sort of the supply limitations, needing to sort of get multiple feedstocks together, start really scaling up an RNG build-out by 2040, and that's going to present a challenge in and of itself. So it's not to say that there aren't challenges with RNG. There are many still outstanding that would require sort of early action if we want to see those volumes by 2040.
Hi, Nick.
Hi, Nick. Thank you for the presentation, and, you know, I appreciated the detail that went into highlighting and quantifying the lost federal support over the next 10-plus years, but I want to dive in a little bit to that $25 billion number a little bit and make sure I'm understanding it properly. So when you talk about the $25 billion over now to 2040, lost as a result of the changes in federal policy, that's focused specifically on funding from the federal government not being put into projects in New York State. That $25 billion doesn't take into consideration the financial benefits, the economic multipliers of investments, a dollar invested can drive additional economies and additional benefits within the state beyond that initial investment. Just want to clarify that.
Yeah, that's right. So we're basically looking at the accelerated phase-out of the investment and production tax credits. Renewables like wind and solar have an extremely accelerated phase-out, and that's where we're seeing some of the most significant impacts. Those incentives can be about 30% to 50% of the capital cost for a project, depending on where a project is located and certain adders that were previously available. We also see significant impacts on hydrogen. This was a resource that was used as a proxy defer, but, you know, this was impacted on the generation side, on the production side, on the electrolyzer build-out and conversion side. So all of those are sort of embedded in that $25 billion, but as you noted, there were sort of additional multipliers and benefits that aren't accounted for in this analysis. And so the $25 billion is limited to just sort of the ITC and PTC impact that was lost.
And I will also note that, I think, as I think Nick said on one slide, it also doesn't take into account the increased costs from the tariffs and some of the other measures. So there's additional costs to New Yorkers that are being incurred by these federal actions.
Thank you. You anticipated my next question, so just to wrap that all up, to make sure I'm understanding, the $25 billion that you quantified is a conservative estimate of the benefits lost to New Yorkers, and in fact, it could be a multiple order of magnitudes higher if you were to do a more in-depth analysis, looking at the co-benefits that were lost as a result of this lack of investment.
Yeah, I think we have some estimates on the slide itself that show the impacts of the tariffs, and I think the other major component, as Carl noted, is lost learning. We modeled a more conservative learning rate, reflecting sort of less deployment across the nation, less sort of development for the industry, and those are sort of, those were quantified on the slide earlier and are substantial as well.
Do we have other questions from the members?
I just have a quick question, because we hear from people, well, yeah, this federal government's not helping us with this. What are the things that we could be doing at the state level and maybe increasing or, you know, adding to that could compensate for some of this that we're losing from the federal government?
Yeah, maybe one thing to jump in on is to take advantage of the federal support that is still there. So there's an acceleration as quickly as we can in the very near term to take advantage of those investments. But I also think, you know, when we look out in the longer term, there are some of the other barriers, which we're continuing to refine, interconnection costs and making that more efficient and smoother, figuring out how we can cite faster and more easily, and that can lower costs. And some of the work that we've done to do pre-environmental assessments, where we, as a state, can look at a whole region, whether it be offshore or also land-based, we can do some of those assessments ahead, can make it both faster but also cheaper for folks to then come in and do their projects. So I think there are some of those enabling programmatic areas where we can help to both speed up and also reduce some of those costs. It won't fully displace the $25 billion, but there's certainly actions that we have been taking in that we can take.
Carl, do you want to speak, though, more to the, you use the term "learning." I think that may deserve a bit more of an explanation, because of course, we are, it's not just a cost issue, it's a market growth issue and therefore a cost compression issue that even New York's action can't address alone.
Yeah, so there's a, as Chair Christian mentioned, there's a multiplier effect of some of these actions, and because we're seeing the industry as a whole having lower national push, we're going to see the deployment across all of our regions. So New England and the central of the country will see lower deployment levels, and therefore our engineers, our folks who are building the markets, our ISOs, will be learning more slowly how to incorporate these, how to lower costs. So it's both the classic economy of scale that we're going to see less of, where we can kind of have a cheaper product and we make more of it, but there are also those kind of systemic issues that, again, as we scale up as a nation more slowly, we will see lower cost declines, so we'll see higher costs as a result. Other parts of the world will not, because they're continuing to deploy faster. So there's going to be that discrepancy, and you're absolutely right. We, as a state, are not an island, and so we have to work in a national and regional market, and so this not only affects us, but everyone, and therefore, as a group, we have higher costs. Okay, well, that's been a really rich discourse. Thanks for those great questions.
Yes. Thank you, and again, thank you, Nick and team, for those updates. So now, we're going to move to our next update. This is on the plan's affordability analysis that we heard about earlier this year. Carl, would you like to tee that up?
Please, yeah. So we'll be, we had the macro view from Nick, and now we're going to zoom in and look a little bit about the household. So our next presentation will focus on energy affordability for New York households. As you recall, this analysis considers New York's current challenges in this space, as well as the potential ways to reduce energy burdens. So energy affordability has been a guiding principle in the development of the plan's analysis and recommendations, and as I think as all of you noted at the hearings, but also as we've been reading through the comments, it's worth noting that affordability garnered significant, perhaps the most significant attention from our public comments. So we're pleased to be able to take in some of that feedback and provide you with some updates today. As discussed, we see resource diversity as an important tool, not only in reliability, but also affordability of our system. The plan also speaks to our state's commitment to lowering household energy use by investing in energy efficiency, driving innovation in lower-cost technology options and more. So with that, it's now my pleasure to hand over the mic to James Wilcox, who's our Program Manager for NYSRIS Policy and Analysis Team, to discuss affordability. James?
Thanks, Carl, and I appreciate the opportunity to update the board on our household energy affordability analysis. Next slide, please. Since we presented the draft analysis in June, we've received and reviewed public comments and updated our analysis to include the latest available data. For our base case, we've moved to an electric and gas price forecast based on the trend of total residential bills from the DPS and utility bill history. We've also added a higher energy price growth sensitivity based on the trend of total residential bills from the past five years, where we've seen higher-than-average increases, combined with recent DPS and utility projections. Although the numbers have shifted, our key takeaways remain the same, and the net result from these updates is a higher growth rate for electricity and gas rates. Next slide, please. So I'll be revisiting our key analysis findings, and so to ground our analysis in a broader context, our data updates have reinforced our initial observations. Across the U.S. and across New York State, households face affordability challenges. We see this when we look at the breakdown of household spending by category and see that categories like housing, transportation, food, and healthcare are key drivers, and energy, as we can see when we look at the pie chart, is a component of household and transportation spending. When we compare energy spending levels between the U.S. and New York State, we observe that on average, prices are higher in New York State than the U.S., but average energy consumption is lower, leading to lower combined energy expenditures than the national average, as well as the top-out migration states from New York. And that bar chart compares those two spending levels between New York State and the United States. Although New Yorkers spend less on energy than the average American, energy remains an important affordability challenges, a challenge for many households. Next slide, please. In particular, low- and moderate-income households are more likely to experience energy affordability challenges. The latest data reaffirms what we found in the draft, that on average, expenditures and burdens, or share of income, follow an overall pattern of lower expenditures but disproportionate burdens at lower incomes, a pattern we see illustrated here on this graph, which compares U.S. and New York State energy expenditures, the bold outlined bars, and burdens, the patterned bars, across income quintiles from left to right. We also note that, on average, total energy spending and burdens are lower in New York State than in the U.S. across income quintiles. In addition to energy burden, we find that across the U.S. and New York State, lower-income and more vulnerable households experience energy insecurity. For example, foregoing other expenses to pay for energy, keeping one's home at an unsafe temperature, or getting behind on an energy bill at above-average rates. And finally, we highlight a theme that we heard in the public comments, that the rate of change in energy bills, driven by factors like recent price trends, fossil fuel price volatility, seasonality, and the rollout of new rates, constrain household budgets and exacerbate affordability challenges. Next slide. With that grounding context reinforced by our data updates, I'll shift to our forward-looking analysis. To recap our approach, we developed 11 household profiles differentiated by region, income level, and primary heating fuel type, and analyzed total energy expenditures for four distinct technology adoption journeys that are consistent with the range of technology mixes and fuel types we see in the pathways scenarios. These journeys range from a starting point, which looks at continued use of existing fossil-fueled equipment, to conventional replacement, where a household replaces their existing equipment with new, more efficient versions that use the same fuel, and to efficient electrification journeys, both grounded in building efficiency upgrades and featuring different levels of appliance and transportation electrification. Next slide, please. When we revisit the three selected profiles we shared in draft form with the board back in June, we see that the patterns and trends are the same even as the numbers have changed a bit. For this upstate, moderate-income household using heating oil, we can see that relative to the starting point, all of the replacement journeys result in lower household energy spending and transportation energy spending, with the savings improving with efficient electrification. Next slide, please. However, for the same household using natural gas, recall that these patterns are a bit more complex. As in the previous profile, all replacement journeys result in lower spending relative to the starting point, but heat pump adoption can lead to higher heating costs due to the relative price difference between electricity and natural gas. However, this increase is offset by savings from vehicle electrification. And to unpack the colors a little bit, our gasoline, we see in kind of brownish-red, our electricity, we see in green, and we also have a shade of lighter patterned green for vehicle electricity. And in the previous slide, we had orange representing heating oil, and in this slide, we have blue representing natural gas. Next slide, please. And looking at New York City, we continue to see that equipment replacement journeys result in lower spending. In this particular scenario, we see that despite New York City's higher electricity prices, end-use electrification can still save money due to the high efficiencies of battery-electric vehicles and heat pumps, even when, in this case, a new efficient gasoline vehicle comes in a little bit lower, and the savings from efficiency in heat pumps is comparable to conventional replacement. It's worth reiterating here that although these modeled scenarios are indeed representative, real-world results may differ, and these results are sensitive to factors like the efficiency of a household's existing vehicle and selected new vehicle, as well as overall demand for driving. For example, we could see a different fuel spend dynamic depending on the efficiency of the specific vehicle a household selects. Next slide, please. Now here, we see the profiles we just walked through compared to our higher energy price growth sensitivity. There are a few key takeaways to unpack. First, when we look at the starting point, which is a household with no equipment replacement, we see that the increase in total energy spending over five years ranges from 14% to 19% in the higher-price sensitivity across the full range of profiles, compared to 3% to 8% in the base case. And both the base case and the sensitivity illustrate the range of potential impacts from increasing energy prices on a real-dollar basis. We also observed that conventional like-for-like replacement with new, more efficient equipment yields savings across profiles, with higher 2031 savings in the higher-price environment of the sensitivity. And finally, we see that although the relative prices of fuels determine specific expenditures for efficient electrification journeys, energy savings trends for the sensitivity follow similar dynamics to the base case. That households using heating oil experience the most significant savings from efficient electrification, that vehicle electrification offers substantial savings relative to the starting point in all regions, and greater savings than conventional replacement outside of New York City, and households using natural gas upstate can see modest to moderate household operating cost increases, which are offset by transportation cost savings from vehicle electrification. Next slide, please. And finally, our updated equipment cost sensitivity reinforced our initial draft findings as well. On the left here, we can see the same operating costs we've been looking at previously for the replacement journeys, and on the right, we see total spending with equipment costs layered on top in blue, and these are levelized over time. What we can take away is that the net costs for efficient electrification journeys could be 35% to 40% higher than conventional replacement when accounting for equipment, reinforcing the importance of action to address upfront equipment costs so that households are able to access the benefit to these systems. Next slide, please. So to recap key takeaways from our update, first, energy spending is projected to increase on a real-dollar basis for households that continue to use existing equipment. Second, across profiles and journeys in real-dollar terms, many households may see gradually declining rates of energy consumption and total energy spending as more efficient equipment is adopted, which can help to offset energy price increases. And in many cases, savings in one category, like transportation, could offset incremental cost increases in another category, like heating. Next slide, please. And our update reinforces the overall conclusions from our draft analysis. Across New York, households face affordability challenges, and low- and moderate-income households are more likely to experience energy affordability challenges. To understand how energy costs impact people, it's important to look comprehensively at all energy spending, which includes, for most households, both household and transportation energy spending. Expected increases in energy prices highlight the importance of actions that can lower energy costs, and these actions include a variety of energy efficiency and efficient electrification measures. And all of this underscores the need for policy and market solutions to lower upfront costs and other barriers to adoption for a range of energy efficiency measures, which have the potential to enable households to realize lower, more affordable operating costs, and in turn, help to alleviate energy insecurity and energy burdens. And finally, because of the importance and cross-cutting nature of energy affordability, we recommend follow-on research to further advance our understanding of energy affordability for households and potential solutions. Thank you, and I'm happy to take questions as time allows.
Great, thank you, James, for that. So any extra comments or questions from the board, Chair Harris or others? Please go ahead.
Thank you, James. I'm going to try to summarize just two points. One, just maybe just describe for us in general what the key differences are for an upstate, typical upstate versus downstate household? Let's start there, make sure we're understanding our geographic realities.
Yeah, absolutely. So our model incorporates a number of factors that differentiate, right? One is climate, so we factor in the colder climate upstate and the more milder climate downstate. We also differentiate by dwelling size. We have a little bit of larger dwelling size upstate and downstate, so energy use patterns are different. Transportation demand patterns are also different. Our profiles start with a driving household, so you saw in those graphs that, you know, we had transportation fuel costs for our different household profiles, and those transportation demands, underlying transportation demands, driving demands are higher upstate than they are downstate for driving households. We also acknowledge that for many households, particularly in New York City, they're primarily transit users, and so we made sure to unpack our analysis so a reader can look at the different components of the energy spend and look at, you know, what would this mean if this household were not a driving household and just a transit-using household? We also acknowledge that that's the same upstate. Many households rely on transit upstate as well, so we show our results modularly, so, you know, a reader can see their household reflected in those profiles. So I think that probably gets at the main, the pertinent factors.
Thank you. I think that's important, because that's one of the reasons why we had to produce so many variations, right? Like, it reflects the diversity of our state in a way that means that the answer isn't the same for everyone, depending on their own experience and the way they live. The other question I have, which I think you explore in the new sensitivity, has to do with the, we'll call it the inaction. So what happens if a household does not purchase new equipment? What happens if a household doesn't increase their energy efficiency? Like, what does business-as-usual look like for a standard household?
Right. So in that case, the key driver-
Right, so in that case, the key driver of change over those five years is the change in energy price, right? And so that's how, you know, we produced our base case and our sensitivity to explore that range. And just as a recap, the increase in household spending was 3% to 8% in the base case, depending on the profile, and 14% to 19% in the higher-price sensitivity, if a household is using the same equipment that they're using after that five-year time step.
And then, James, maybe to kind of take those percentages in context, was it, in that higher-price sensitivity, a household that did nothing could see as much as $100 a month increase costs? Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So there's a substantial increase with these energy prices for folks who don't take any action?
Thank you, that's what I was trying to elicit, was what does doing nothing get you? Thank you. Assemblymember Barrett?
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for addressing that upstate-downstate issue. I have a, you know, just sort of a follow-up on that. Anticipating snowstorms tomorrow, which I'm not sure exactly where it's going to hit, but I'm hoping that my generator will kick in. How are we addressing the upstate and anywhere else where you're dependent on a generator, where you also have drop-in fuels even as you're electrifying more and more? How are we factoring that and showing that dynamic and the costs involved in paying for a generator, you know, the additional fuel involved, all of that in these metrics?
Yeah, thank you for that question. You know, generator usage, because it wasn't a differentiating factor across the different journeys, that's sort of baked in to our assumption set for an upstate household because we didn't look at differences in the need for a generator between, you know, a starting-point household or an efficient electrification household. So we recognize it's a very important issue for upstate households that I believe we address in some of the other chapters of the plan, just as a feature of using energy upstate. Carl, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, no, I can just build from it, too. So I think as part of what, to tie together our two presentations, so Nick did highlight different scenarios, looking at more hybridized homes, where you can have multiple fuel steel plates versus the pure electric, and some of those benefits and risks that come from that. I think one of the things we don't tap into yet, but we have a two-year update, so we can explore that more, is we're going to begin to see the electrification providing whole-new services we didn't expect. So vehicles are actually moving batteries, and we have an ability right now, there are models for sale in the U.S., they've been in sale for Europe for years, where your car can become that backup energy source. So there's very little additional cost. You have a bidirectional charger, and if you have a hybrid system where you have, you know, a heat pump, but maybe also your furnace, you could run that furnace off the car and don't even need a generator. So there's some of those synergies that we need to explore in terms of systems thinking, to say, how do we get multiple benefits during this transition out of these new systems? And they will become also tools for the grid, but there's going to be opportunities even for the individual household that we need to explore.
On that final point, well said, and the commission is working with that goal in mind for a number of different proceedings. I did want to ask one question, and not sure if I missed this or if it's baked in, and I imagine it's not, given the diversity of housing throughout the state and the variation, but the subject of weatherization, you know, the more efficient you make the entirety of the household, the less of an upfront cost on much of these investments you need to make. But I imagine there's so much diversity in housing from age, condition, and other things that that wasn't a part of this analysis. Is that a safe assumption to make?
So actually, we do include weatherization measures in our, both of our efficient electrification journeys. So we've got costs for weatherization, different levels of weatherization reflected in those different, those two variants for different building profiles. So we did bake it in, or incorporate it into those profiles, and we do see that it makes a huge difference, right? It makes a huge difference on overall electricity consumption for households that adopt a heat pump. So we kind of designed those two electrification journeys with weatherization and building shell retrofits embedded in the profile.
No, that, yeah, no, it's a great question. I think Nick mentioned how efficiency is still the bedrock, and I think our affordability lens has caused us maybe to remember our old friend, who sometimes, you know, has been in the background, but having energy efficiency as our core, you know, as we analyze systems and we looked at that kind of middle scenario of a hybrid system, if you didn't have efficiency, in some cases, you wouldn't even be able to be cheaper than the current BAU. So efficiency is kind of an inextricable part of any of these pathways.
Right, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, thank you, James. Following up on the chairman's question, I did see in the charts that the efficiency was baked into the pathway journey, but you also highlighted in one of your later charts the importance and the impact that the upfront capital costs have on people's ability to make this journey. Are the electrification, are the efficiency or weatherization costs included in those numbers, or is that just looking at equipment?
Yes, so weatherization, building shell upgrades are included in that upfront cost sensitivity. So include, you know, all of the building shell costs, equipment costs for, you know, a heat pump, for transportation measures, other appliances as well.
Great, thank you. And for the record, I have to say that I hope Assemblymember Barrett's generator doesn't need to work tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One more question, just, James, excellent analysis all around, as we come to expect. It's great, thank you for doing that. Did I hear you write on the affordability analysis that even for downstate, you assumed a car household, and that leads to, that's a point of clarification, I guess the question to have, and maybe it's a two-year update question, is did you look at the potential in either study for modal shifts to either help households affordability or, and/or to reduce transportation emissions?
Yeah, great question. So, you know, we did include driving in all of our household profiles. In the chapter, you know, we certainly recognize and kind of call out the findings for a household that primarily uses transit as well. So we kind of structure our analysis where we have a default, but we also have other ways of looking at the numbers. And so one of our core messages is for New Yorkers that use transit, they are already pursuing an affordability strategy to keep those total energy costs manageable, and if more households used transit, that would be a strategy for affordability as well.
Okay, well, thank you, James, for that presentation, and to the members for your questions. We're becoming affordability experts, as we should, right? And I agree on the efficiency point. That was actually the subject of a number of comments that we received, and very reflective of the final that you're seeing today. Two more relatively brief topics we want to cover. First, an update on the health analysis, and the second, the update on the employment analysis. Over to you, Carl.
Great, yep, so I'll just do a quick intro. We did hear about health and employment during our July meeting. We've asked our experts to come in so we could have the kind of fully-rounded discussion. Nick spoke to the health benefits in the total benefit cost analysis, so we'll be able to unpack a little bit of those numbers, and then we'll also speak to some of the job opportunities. So I'll hand the mic over to Rachel Silverman and Amy Bell-Pash, our two project managers from my Certus Policy and Analysis team. Rachel will discuss the health analysis, followed by Amy, who will present on jobs. So Rachel first.
Thanks, Carl. Hi, everyone, I'm Rachel Silverman, and I'm going to provide a brief overview of the public health impacts of the plan. Next slide, please. The health analysis of the plan evaluates the impacts of the economy-wide energy policies from the pathways analysis on air quality and public health in New York State, shown in the schematic on the left. The models used in the health analysis estimate the impacts on air quality and public health from changes in fine particulate matter, or PM 2.5, at the community scale, and ozone at the county scale. The modeling framework that was used is the same as was used in the draft plan, so I won't get into the details of the methodology that was presented previously. I've just noted on this slide a handful of technical updates that were made. I'll also note that the public health benefits quantified in this analysis should be considered conservatively low because we don't account for additional health benefits that would come from additional reductions in other air pollutants, improvements to indoor air quality, and other health benefits not related to reductions in fuel consumption. Next slide, please. The health analysis considered the updated scenarios that we just heard about in the pathways presentation. The next few slides will be focused on results of the additional action scenario, and all results will be shown relative to the no-action scenario, absent local and state policies. I will note that the health analysis chapter of the plan does include analysis of all of the policy scenarios. Next slide, please. I'll start with key findings. We find that the additional action scenario would lead to improvements in statewide air quality and substantial public health benefits. Cumulatively, from 2025 to 2040, these amount to approximately 6,500 cases of avoided premature deaths, 2,700 avoided cases of non-fatal heart attacks, and 8,700 avoided emergency room visits for asthma. The health benefits in disadvantaged community areas would be greater than their share of the population. Disadvantaged community areas represent about 37% of the statewide population, but about 50% of the health benefits would accrue in DAC areas. Most statewide benefits would be from lower emissions from residential buildings and on-road vehicles. Health benefits and their value would increase over time to up to $14 billion annually in 2040, and these health benefits would continue after 2040. And lastly, the cumulative health benefits from the additional action scenario are about 60% higher than the current policy scenario. Next slide, please. Diving into some of the physical health benefits, this table is showing the full range of health endpoints included in the health analysis and the annual avoided cases in 2040 for each endpoint. The bars on the right show that for each endpoint, the fraction of benefits accruing within disadvantaged communities is greater than their share of the population because DAC areas generally experience greater improvements in air quality and have higher baseline incidence rates for the health conditions that were analyzed here compared to non-DAC areas. Next slide, please. Looking at a few illustrative health outcomes, we can see that annual health benefits are projected to increase over time, shown here from 2030 to 2040, and these health benefits would continue to grow beyond 2040, and this is the case for all of the health endpoints included in this analysis. Next slide, please. All regions of the state and all communities would experience public health benefits. The figure here is showing estimated per capita health benefits in 2040 by region and community type. In all regions, disadvantaged communities, shown in orange, would experience higher per capita benefits than non-DAC areas, shown in blue. Adding up benefits statewide and accounting for differences in population, we find that DAC areas would experience approximately 70% higher benefits compared to non-DAC areas. Next slide, please. In addition to the core scenarios, the health analysis also considered two sensitivities of the current policy scenario that were introduced in the pathways presentation to examine the impact of federal energy policies on statewide health benefits. I'll note that in general, there are fewer statewide backstops included in the current policy scenario compared to the other policy scenarios. So current policies is expected to be relatively more sensitive to changes in federal policies than the other policy scenarios. Next slide, please. I'll dive into the public health benefits of federal energy policies in two ways. Starting with the figure on the left, I'm showing the impacts of federal policies on physical health outcomes as cumulative avoided cases for several health endpoints. The federal rollbacks currently enacted under current policies, shown in the blue bars, are estimated to have lowered health benefits that would have been achieved under the pre-federal rollback scenario, shown in the brown bars. For example, under current policies, there are an estimated 2,000 fewer avoided premature deaths, 1,000 fewer avoided non-fatal heart attacks, and 3,000 fewer avoided emergency room visits for asthma compared to the pre-rollback scenario. The further federal rollback scenario in pink would result in even fewer benefits relative to current policies. For example, there could be 1,000 fewer avoided premature deaths, 500 fewer avoided non-fatal heart attacks, and 2,000 fewer avoided emergency room visits for asthma compared to current policies. The figure on the right shows the annual value of health benefits from 2025 to 2050. Compared to the health benefits that would have been achieved under the pre-federal rollback scenario in 2040, where that brown line intersects the dotted line in 2040, the federal rollbacks currently enacted under current policies delay the achievement of the same level of benefits by four years. The further federal rollback scenario would delay achievement of that same level of benefits by over 10 years beyond 2050. Next slide, please. I'll conclude with a few key findings. Federal energy policies are projected to impact the public health benefits experienced by New York State. Cumulative health benefits would have been approximately 50% higher relative to the current policy scenario if federal energy policy rollbacks as of October 2025 had not occurred. If some federal policies were further rolled back, cumulative health benefits could further decrease by up to 30% compared to current policies. Changes in emissions from residential buildings and on-road vehicles in the sensitivities explored here account for these differences in health benefits. And overall, current federal policies may have set back public health benefits that may have been achieved by 2040, by four years, and further rollbacks could result in the same level of benefits being set back beyond 2050. And with that, I'll thank you for your attention and hand things over to Amy.
Thank you, Rachel. So today, I'll walk us through some of the high-level job impacts from the updated pathways analysis, so following on the updates that Nick talked about. We impact, we assess the impacts in the employment sector. For the purposes of this analysis, we look solely at the additional action scenario, the 2.2-gigawatt nuclear variant version of it, but in the chapter, we also analyze the net zero B impacts. So starting first with the big picture, the graph on the slide captures the total number of jobs in each year. By 2040, on the end of the plan horizon, we project to add roughly 80,000 new jobs, which represents an increase of about 17%. The building sector and the electricity sector, in blue and green, make up the lion's share of New York's energy workforce and are the two sectors where we project growth. Just under 30% of these jobs are in transportation, and less than 10% are in fuels, the red and orange on the graph. And the following slides will break this down in additional detail. So looking here at the net change by each sector over the course of the plan, we see that the electricity sector grows by 44%, adding over 60,000 new jobs. Building sector grows by 23%, adding 38,000 jobs, followed by transportation sector and fuel sector, which jointly we project displacement of about 17,000 jobs, which represents a decline of about 10% in each sector. I'll note that the net growth from our two sectors on the left outpaced the displacement by about five times, which is why we see such meaningful growth in the overall core planning So zooming in a little bit onto subsectors where these changes occur, I'll first start us off with the displacement subsectors. From left to right on the graph, we see the bulk of displacement is in fueling stations and vehicle maintenance as a result of increased adoption of electric vehicles. We also see displacement in fossil generation as we meet our 0x40 requirements. However, I'll note here that this displacement is offset somewhat by repowering plants to defer, and as Nick mentioned in this model, we assume that's hydrogen, but that is subject to modeling assumptions. So we see some displacement there as those workers work and repower plants. We also see displacement in patrol We also see displacement in petroleum fuels as demand decreases. And I'll also take a minute to note here, not pictured on the graph, is the natural gas distribution sector. So whereas on the graph that Nick showed earlier, we see somewhat of a decrease in consumption over the course of the plan, in this additional action scenario, we actually project flat demand for employment over the course of this plan. So that's why we don't see it in the displacement sector. But additionally, when we consider turnover as workers retire, we actually see a need to recruit new workers to the tune of about 2,000 new gas workers. So that is potentially a growth area as we dig deeper. Looking now at growth subsectors, here we have a longer list to require or to look at. We have residential buildings with the largest growth, where we expect 30,000 new jobs to support building electrification and energy efficiency. Solar and wind generation are the second and fourth-largest growth areas, consistent with the plan's continued commitment to growing these resources. And I'll note that, you know, this growth is less rapid, given the updated assumptions since the draft plan, but we still see really meaningful increase with those 30,000 new jobs jointly between the two subsectors, representing about doubling the workforce from our base case. In the electric distribution subsector, we see also growth, 25%, roughly adding 50,000 new jobs, or rather, 15,000 new jobs. And these will be critical to meeting needs for system upgrades, modernization, as well as support for growth in electric demand. And finally, I'll pause on nuclear generation, which is a new addition to this graph, where we project over 10,000 new jobs to support the 2.2 gigawatts of new advanced nuclear capacity. This growth is largely in the construction industry and is projected to occur later in the plan years. And then I'll note also, we see growth in charging stations, commercial buildings, energy storage, and some in hydropower and biofuels. And finally, I'll walk through a little bit the types of work that this breaks out by. We see about 40% of this graph as spread across other supply chain work, which includes operations, professional services, and work that's induced across other sectors. However, you can see that about more than half of the new jobs that will be created will be in the construction industry. We also project about 5,000 new jobs in manufacturing. So as mentioned in the July meeting, I highlight these last two categories as they tend to be higher-paying, have higher union density, and point to the ways in which our core planning scenario will drive high-quality jobs. So with that, I thank the members of the board, and I'll hand it back to Carl.
Great. Thank you both. Thank you, Rachel and Amy, for those quick walkthroughs. I guess a couple of things maybe to emphasize on the health. It's a fairly similar story we saw in the draft, and it really speaks to the fact we're seeing broad-scale health impacts for every community from this work. And we're also seeing that because those disadvantaged communities have historically been exposed to more, they're more predisposed to benefit as we reduce the combustion in their neighborhoods. So those were consistent findings that I think we were able to amplify here. And then on the jobs, I think we did see some interesting new findings. Some of it came through the feedback of our comment period. Obviously, there's new technologies like advanced nuclear. But I think that point Amy raised, which is through the planning horizon, we're seeing a continued reliance on some of our existing infrastructure. And so we're going to need to maintain that system over this next 15 years. And we have an aging fleet, but also an aging workforce. So conversely, we need to think about how we're making sure that we're training and bringing on those skilled resources across every energy type. So it's not this linear progression where we're just going to be swapping jobs. We have to maintain some of those skills that we've had for the last few decades into the future. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the board for any follow-on questions, and I'll again open up with Chair Harris.
Yes, I'll add my thanks to the team for these updates. I remember, you know, first of all, I think a general observation is just really how interconnected our energy system is to the outcomes that you're describing, both with respect to economic growth, job growth, but also the health benefits, which I remember at the time of the Climate Action Council, I was, of course, your model. I guess, Rachel, my question for you is really, what we're able to model are only a subset of the health benefits that can actually be realized. So maybe you can speak to some of the other benefits, which we haven't quantified in this analysis.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for the question. So the health analysis that I showed the results for here focus on outdoor PM 2.5 and ozone, which are our most important outdoor air pollutants for human health. But we would expect the energy policies in the pathways scenarios to result in a number of other health benefits that weren't quantified. So for example, we would expect to see improvements in lower concentrations of other air pollutants, for example, NO2, which is another criteria pollutant. We would expect to see from on-road vehicle electrification, lower NO2 concentrations. We would also expect to see in the industrial sector, reduction in hazardous air pollutants as industry decarbonizes as well. In the residential building sector, we expect improvements in indoor air quality. That's something else that we haven't quantified here. And then there are a host of other health benefits from other kind of outgrowths of the energy policies. So for example, in the scoping plan, they found additional health benefits from increases in active transportation as modes of transportation changed, as well as additional building efficiency upgrades that further improved health outcomes. I will just note that the public health benefits from the avoided greenhouse gas emissions, so those climate impacts to health are accounted for in the avoided GHG benefits piece of the cost-benefit analysis that Nick showed.
Great. Thank you. That was my recollection from our earlier modeling, was when Carl informed us that walking was going to help us with our health outcomes.
Yeah, that was for Carter.
To you, Amy, I think we should talk about the impacts of the federal administration's policies on job creation. Already, I've seen some reports that even New York has lost a number of clean energy jobs on the order of, I forget, it was seven, 8,000 clean energy jobs. So can you speak to the extent and how the job losses were modeled in this instance?
Yes. So to some extent, those changes are captured in this model, you know, by incorporating into our pathways analysis some of the federal headwinds and changes to federal policy. We see those changes. So by looking between the draft plan and the final analysis that we just looked at today, you do see less growth in the renewable sector. So, you know, while we still have that meaningful growth, it is subdued compared to what it would have been prior to those policy changes. So the short answer is, in some ways, it's incorporated already, but there's still market uncertainty playing out, and a lot of those job losses that you mentioned, Chair Harris, have, you know, are a result of market uncertainty, there's sort of knock-on effects from those policy changes. So I think we'll still see that and incorporate it into our baseline as we update the analysis going forward.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Well, I do want to sincerely thank Carl and the entire team, Nick, James, Rachel, Amy, but the many agency contacts within NYSERDA, as well as represented by the members of the board for these updates. They occurred on a quick time horizon, but I think very necessarily reflect the dynamic nature of the economy we're working within. I want to thank you, as we seek to finalize this plan, for your work to make that analysis as up-to-date as it possibly can be. So we'll now move to other business. I'll ask if the members have any other business to bring before the board. Hearing none, I'll move to our final slide. We are nearing the final stages of the development of the state energy plan. In terms of next steps, as you should all know, I do look forward to meeting with the board again later this month to vote on the issuance of the state energy plan. And so we will be convening in the next couple of weeks to do just that. If we're members of the public, if you would like updates on that meeting, please visit the state energy plan website to sign up for email updates. And so with that, I'd like to thank the board members, their delegates, for coming to this energy plan meeting and for your participation today. This meeting of the State Energy Planning Board is hereby adjourned. Thank you all.